...conversation with folks here that whether it was appropriate to have the approval of the contract to be entered into with Sentinel, Minnesota for the purchase of these 18 semi-automatic weapons, that the old weapons do indeed go to a law enforcement agency and they don't end up on the street. So that was one of the concerns that I had, especially with the nature of the weaponry, that we make sure that they go to a law enforcement agency of some type after they get refurbished. And so if someone, if we're like-minded on that, if someone wants to make that sort of motion, I would appreciate it.
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you. Second? Got a motion in a second to approve the request for purchase for police equipment replacement rifles under six I, conditioned upon the agreement from Sentinel, Minnesota, that the weapons we trade in will be refurbished and thereafter sold to law enforcement agencies only. Any further discussion?
Yes. So how would you verify that? I mean, we can ask for it, we can stipulate it in the resolution, but how do we go back and verify that that actually happened?
Senator Neal, any thoughts there? I mean, to me, it's like a lot of other contractual situations, it's a bit of a leap of faith here. They're gonna do what they say they're gonna do. We got serial numbers that can track them.
Certainly, there would be a bit of a leap of faith. And I think it's, that might be fair, because we're imposing a new condition on them after they've already bid this contract.
That's right.
So I think that would be fair for us to then have a trust in them. But we will discuss this with them and we'll make sure they understand that it's conditional. They are a well-known, well-respected vendor in this state, and I think we could trust them.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the passage of six I with the conditions stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. All right, on to special recognitions and presentations. We've got two matters in front of us this evening, and we're really pleased and honored to have our Chief Judge Ivy Bernadette with us this evening, who's gonna give us a report. I take it on the state of the Hennepin County District Court system. And Judge Bernadette, welcome. So nice to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. It was a special privilege for me to be here, because my husband was the Assistant City Manager here, starting his city manager career a long time ago in the city of Edina. And so I'm sure he never thought his wife would be up here, but I'm here in my role as Chief Judge of Hennepin County District Court. I know you have a handout that we provided to you, which is sort of a snapshot of the court. I'm making the rounds of the jurisdictions in Hennepin County as an outreach, because I know many people don't know much about the court, and maybe you don't want to know much about the court. But of course, we are a separate branch of government here in Minnesota. We have been a unified state branch since the 1990s. We're funded by the state legislature. Hennepin County District Court, of course, is the biggest trial court in the state of Minnesota. Well, in Hennepin County, we have 22% of the state's population, 40% of the case filings for the entire state are in Hennepin County. So we are the urban giant, and one of the top 15 urban counties in the nation, as a matter of fact. We function through divisions, of course. Our criminal division, which touches the city probably the most, is our biggest division. Eighty-eight percent of the case filings are in our criminal division. And we have most of those cases heard downtown with the two suburban locations at Brookdale and Ridgedale. But we do have other important divisions of the court as well. Our civil division, which hears all kinds of civil cases, personal injury, employment, contract, et cetera. Our family court, which hears dissolutions, marital dissolutions, paternity, child custody, child support matters. Our juvenile court for children in need of protection and juvenile delinquency. And our probate mental health court, which has civil commitment and formal probate and trust proceedings. All in all, we have five locations. We have 63 judges in Hennepin County, so we are the biggest court. There's about 300 judges in total in the entire state of Minnesota. We have 12 specialized referees, mostly in our family court, and about 564 staff in total. The picture that you see on our handout is a recent addition, if you haven't been to the Government Center. We wanted a depiction of our mission, which is to provide justice through a system that assures equal access for the fair and timely resolution of cases and controversies. And then the phrase, which is on every federal courthouse, "Equal Justice Under Law." In Hennepin County, we are also busy summoning people who live in Edina and everywhere else in Hennepin County. About 26,000 people a year come to be jurors in our system, over 900 jury trials every year. So we're busy every week with trials of both civil and criminal cases. We are not without our challenges, of course. Our criminal courts see people with addiction and mental illness every day. Our treatment courts, which are a model for high-risk, high-need defendants, I would invite any of you, if you're interested. Mostly, we get state legislators that come and see our treatment courts, because a lot of that is funded with state money. But if you're interested in how we function, there is our contact information there, if you want to come and visit. We are also proud of the innovations that District Court has put forth. We are all electronic. We have a signing judge available 24/7 to sign your search warrants, and I personally sign a fair number of those. So we're busy 24/7. We now text and email people to remind them of their court appearances, and that was an innovation we started in Hennepin County a couple of years ago, and now it's being rolled out to the entire state this fall. So everything else is just sort of a snapshot of who we are. We have interpreters, of course, in Hennepin County, over 100 languages. So it's a big system that moves. We have 1,400 hearings a day throughout our system. So we're a busy place, but we try to keep up with the performance standards that we hold ourselves to. So the only other thing I wanted to tell you is, since I said we are a state branch, and funded by the legislature, the fines and fees that are generated by the court actually go back to the municipalities that we serve, including the city of Edina. 80% go to the municipality, 20% to the State General Fund. In 2018, we returned $1 million to the city of Edina. So I think that's testament to your efficient police department. I'm not sure who else to credit to that. So that's really all I wanted to say. Thank you for supporting the courts, and we're happy to see anyone come, if you're interested in visiting, as I said. And I would entertain any questions, if anybody has any at this point.
Good. Any questions for Judge Bernadette? Comments? She won't hold it against you.
I'm used to being grilled. If not, I want to thank you for your time, and I hope you don't mind if I just leave.
No, we do not mind at all.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you for coming in.
Hi to Mark. Say hi to Mark.
I will do that.
All right, the next matter in front of us this evening in the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda is a proclamation for September 8th, 2019, designating that day as Women's Suffrage Ratification Centennial Day. And that proclamation reads as follows: Whereas on January 10th, 1918, a constitutional amendment allowing women's suffrage was passed by the United States House. And whereas on June 4th, 1919, the United States Senate passed the 19th Amendment and sent it out to the states for ratification. And whereas on September 8th, 1919, Minnesota ratified the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, which would grant national suffrage to women. And whereas Minnesota's ratification as the 15th state paved the way for other states to ratify the 19th Amendment. And whereas September 8th, 2019, marks the 100th anniversary of Minnesota's ratification of the 19th Amendment. And whereas communities across the state are celebrating the 19th Amendment and the date of Minnesota's ratification, and now therefore I, James B. Hovland, Mayor of the city of Edina, do hereby proclaim September 8th, 2019, as Women's Suffrage Ratification Centennial Day in the city of Edina, and encourage residents to commemorate September 8th, 2019, as the centennial of Minnesota's ratification of the 19th Amendment, and engage and participate in suffrage centennial programs and activities in honor of the largest single-day expansion of voting rights in our nation's history. Is there a motion to adopt a proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, second, to adopt a proclamation, as read. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have some folks with us this evening that want to come up. Colleen Feige, I think. Colleen, if you want to come up and address the council and the residents of Edina, one of the side podiums would probably work the best, and give us your name and address and why you happen to be here to accept a proclamation, and then we'll have a photo, too, I think.
Well, thank you. I'm Colleen Feige. I'm a resident of 6616 Field Way in Edina, and I'm the president of the League of Women Voters, Edina. And I want to thank you for that proclamation, and recognize that Minnesota was ahead of most of the nation in that ratification. And so this year, Minnesota, League of Women Voters Minnesota is celebrating 100 years. In March of 2020, the U.S. League of Women Voters is celebrating 100 years, and Edina is 65 years old. League of Women Voters Edina is 65 years old. I want to thank you for the support that you have given us, and to tell you, we have lots of events coming up for the centennial. Here's a list of the, and you'll be seeing more of this. We're going to have a Century of Civic Engagement at the Grand View Library, beginning October 14th till the 20th. We're having a public reception. You'll all get invitations, and the whole public is invited to that. On the 16th, we're going to have a presentation on the U.S. Fight for Women's Suffrage. We're gonna have a trivia night in November. And on March 8th, 2020, we're going to be giving out cake to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters U.S. So I think we're very happy to have your support. And one other thing I'll mention, a week from tomorrow, that's September 12th, we are going to have a candidate, a school board candidate forum here in City Hall from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and we invite everyone to come. All seven candidates have been invited, and last thing I knew, they all planned to be here. So, and I know all of you have probably been on one of those forums, so have I. Not school board, well, me, school board, you, City Council, so we look forward to that. Thank you so much for this.
Good. And do we, does the city have that calendar of events, so they could help?
We're just, we just got it printed. So we will, and we'll also have a big poster that you'll see around different places. So yes, we will, we will make sure that that's...
I'm gonna walk down and present this to you, and I think Keelum's gonna take a photograph.
If you want to have any of your other colleagues up here with you, we can certainly do that.
Well, we have some others.
Yeah.
Pope, and Carolyn, and Arnie, and I guess anybody I know. Thanks, sir.
proclamations. And we're gonna move on now to the public hearing portion of the agenda. And we have two public hearing matters. One is going to just take us a short amount of time, because we're gonna set a hearing date. But the first matter is a request for a conditional use permit for Our Lady of Grace. This has already been to the Planning Commission. Emily Bodicker, our Assistant City Planner, has this matter, is gonna make the introductory comments. And then we have Jay Fornia here from Opus, who's gonna present on behalf of the developer and the applicant.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Chris, before we get started on this, I just want to let everyone know that I'm a member of Our Lady of Grace Church, but haven't been involved in any of this planning other than being, you know, the typical parishioner who attended some meetings to see the presentations. So, and if anyone has ever worked with any church, you know the toughest audience is the church members, right? So just make that clear. Right, thanks.
Well, you'll be the one asked to pay for it. I don't view that as a conflict. Maybe it is.
No, I don't see the conflict.
All right. All right. Ms. Bodicker, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, Our Lady of Grace has submitted a plan for a multi-phase master development for improvements that include a priest residence, activity center, parish gathering space expansion, a school expansion, as well as other remodeled areas within the existing buildings. To accommodate that request, a conditional use permit for the expansion of the religious institution is required. A height variance to allow the tallest addition on site to be 47 feet 6 inches is requested. A 63-foot variance to the east property line is requested. A 25-foot variance to the west property line is requested. A 51-foot variance to the south property line is requested. A signed variance to allow for a 100-square-foot building sign, as well as a 15-foot variance to allow for the fence and preschool play area to be placed up to the property line are all requested. The subject property, 5051 Eden Avenue, is approximately 21 acres and is owned R1, single-family dwelling unit district, and is the current site of Our Lady of Grace Church and School. To the north of the subject property is city-owned vacant parcels, owned PID, and an office building, owned POD, both guided as mixed-use center. To the east is Highway 100. To the south is single-family residences. And to the west is Grand View Square, which is owned MDD4 and is also guided as mixed-use center. The exhibit on the screen shows the areas of new construction in purple, so this would be new buildings proposed with the full build-out of the request tonight. The multicolored exhibit here is showing the different phasing of the proposed plan at full build-out. The first phase is the priest residence, which is located in the southwest corner of the subject property. So this multicolored exhibit here shows the new constructed buildings as well as the remodeling of existing structures on the site today. A traffic study was completed by SPAC, which looks at, which has looked at the Eden Avenue and Normandale Road intersection. The traffic study details possible solutions for the intersection when the school is expanded in future phases. Engineering staff recommends that no action is needed until the new construction leads to an increase in an additional 110 students. At that time, an update to the traffic study would be required. Staggering start times may also be required, or the applicant would share in the cost of an intersection improvements at Edendale, at Eden Avenue and Normandale Road. No additional parking is required with the application, but the applicant is adding a small lot to improve access to the sanctuary. Parking requirements for churches and religious institutions are based on maximum seating capacity of the largest place of assembly. The proposed activity center will not seat more than 900 people, which is equal to or less than the existing sanctuary space. Like I said, there is a number of variances requested tonight with the proposed application. The variances that are requested are a 15-foot setback variance for a proposed play area that's placed up to the property line, which is shown in yellow on your screen. A 63-foot setback variance to the east property line for school and parish administration offices, which is shown in orange. A 51-foot variance to the south property line, which matches the existing buildings on the south side of the subject property, which is shown here in pink, down here. And then a 25-foot setback variance to the west property line for the construction of the new priest residence, which is shown in green. Staff believes that the setback variances are justified. The practical difficulties include the existing location of the church, as well as the associated parking. The proposed variances will allow for the new additions to tie in with the existing buildings while preserving existing trees and maximizing open space. The location of the priest residence will provide for an appropriate transition into the surrounding neighborhood. An additional request tonight is for a 100-square-foot building sign. The applicant is showing two locations, either on the north elevation or the east elevation towards Highway 100. Although the location of the existing church is zoned R1, the site may allow for signage that would typically be seen in more of a commercially-zoned area due to the size and the location. Proposed signage would be located on the east and north elevations, which is away from the residential neighborhoods to the south. At the August 14th Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission felt that there was not enough information provided on the specific sign requested, and that they recommended denial of that sign variance for that reason. The requested height variance is to allow for the addition, the tallest addition on site to be 47 feet 6 inches, while in this district, the maximum height is 40 feet. The tallest structure on site would still be the existing sanctuary steeple that's shown here in the elevations. The applicant has used the flat roof of the gym space to minimize the height to neighboring properties and has placed the addition relatively low on site. The proposed height allows for the appropriate curriculum to take place in the gym and to add cafeteria space, and the flat roof would help the addition keep a low profile next to the existing two-story classrooms that have pitched roofs. Here is the proposed materials board for the project build-out. As you can see, the mainly, the additions will mainly be brick to match the existing structure. Tonight, staff believes that the requirements for a conditional use permit have been met. There is not an adverse effect on utilities or service. It will generate traffic within the capacity of the streets. Doesn't have a negative effect on public health and safety. It won't impede normal development on surrounding property, and it conforms to the comprehensive plan. At the Planning Commission meeting on August 14th, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit, the height variance to allow for the tallest addition on site to be 47 feet 6 inches, the 63-foot variance to the east property line, a 25-foot variance to the west property line, a 51-foot variance to the south property line, and a 15-foot variance to allow for the fence and preschool play yard to be placed up to the property line. Like I said, the Planning Commission recommended denial of the requested sign variance. They felt that there was not enough information specific to the proposed sign to approve a variance and for the findings to be met. And with that, I'll stand for any questions, the applicants here tonight, as well as a representative from SPAC Consulting.
Yep, thank you. Questions for Ms. Bodicker at this point in time? Let me ask a couple of questions. With respect to the site planner, I guess you got some elevations up here right now. Do you have some elevations that I missed of the building they're proposing for the Phase 1, which would be the, where the home for, I'm assuming, retired priests, which is something you've talked about before? Which building is that?
I don't think I have those in here. Let me see. Thank you.
All right. And how many, in the past, as I said, we've had some indication from Ollie, they wanted to build a structure for retired priests. Is that what this is for? Is this for priests living on site, or both?
The applicant may be able to answer that question specifically.
You want me to wait there? Come on.
It's for both, so it'll be the active priest that may be visiting as well.
Okay. And the capacity?
I believe it's six rooms, five rooms.
Five rooms, okay. All right. Okay. Would you, can you go back to a site map, a site plan? So they wanted to do this in phases. And I'm just thinking back to Avenue on France, where they wanted to do that in phases, and we did a master plan. And then each time they want to do something that was master-approved, they gotta come back and get another approval. Is that the same situation here, or are we being asked to approve something that, tonight, that will allow them to build everything that they want to build and not have to come back to us, even though it's being built in phases?
You, you can look at the conditional use permit and the variance request separately. And so if you approve the conditional use permit and the requested variances tonight, the variances are good for a year. And then if they're not built, or a building permit isn't pulled within a year... And then if they're not built, or a building permit isn't pulled within a year, then they could come back and ask for an extension for another year. And then if they're not built, or a building permit is not pulled within that year, then it would go back through the process for the areas that have variance associated with them.
Okay. All right. And do you have an aerial photograph that shows not only the entrance on, off Eden Avenue, but also the entrance, entrances to the property off those other two locations on the frontage road?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there you go. So, one of the things I'm concerned about down there is, when it's, and the traffic engineer picked up on this, is that if they're going to grow, there's already some challenges down there in getting people in and out of there, plus dealing with the normal traffic flows that are going through that area for commercial purposes, or other people in our community doing different things. So the notion of a roundabout, to me, seems to be something that should be addressed now as opposed to something that's contingent on whether there are enrollment increases. And also, I'm wondering at the Planning Commission, was there any discussion, or at the staff level, with respect to using some of these other entrances on a, on a more regular basis to take some of the pressure off the Eden Avenue entrance?
That did not come up at the Planning Commission meeting. Chad, do you have anything to add?
Because you've got those two entrances on the frontage road that, and I think they get used, you know, when the OLG Men's Club is selling Christmas trees, but it strikes me that's something that might be worth part of a conversation tonight.
So Mayor, if I, if I could, speak to the traffic on Eden. They looked at the two, the three driveways coming out, and they felt the operations were satisfactory with the build condition and today, because it's such a short period when schools starting and exiting, entering and exiting, just like at the high school or any other school. The main issue was that intersection of Arcadia, Eden, and Normandale. That was the concerned intersection. And until they add another 110 students, which they don't know the timing on, it really didn't trigger an issue with that intersection up until that point. So they had asked, is, can we review that situation when and if they ever get to another 110 students? And I think that would be triggered by the bigger expansion of that bigger building, and that was Phase 2 or a later phase. And then we would work with them on how much do they need to pay for that intersection to improve it at that point.
So what I'm hearing from Emily, though, is that if we approve this tonight, it's approved for all purposes unless they fail to do certain things within a certain period of time, and then they have to come back. So what would, what would trigger us, trigger for us the ability to come back in Phase 2 and say, oh, by the way, we didn't impose this condition at the beginning, but now we want to make sure you help pay for this roundabout because of your increased enrollment?
It's a condition of approval. It's in my engineering memo, and it'll be a condition of approval tonight.
All right. Okay. I'll take a look at that resolution again. I thought I had looked at that carefully. All right, that's, anybody else did that trigger? Any questions for Ms. Bodicker?
Do we have the traffic engineer here?
Yes, we do.
I have some questions for him, if, when the time's appropriate.
I think it is appropriate. As long as we were doing the staff presentation.
We've got someone, Max Moore, from SPAC Consulting. We did a traffic study for us.
Terrific. Thanks for being here.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at page seven of your report, and to the mayor's point, there's a chart on site access usage at the bottom of page seven that seems to reflect at least what I think all of us who ever drive by there at that time experienced, which is that the vast majority of the access, any grass from the site, seems to be, or the access anyway, seems to be from that Eden Avenue entrance.
Right.
I'm wondering if your review gave you any indication of why that is?
So it's actually the way that the school has kind of set up their parent pickup-drop-off situation. The accesses on the east side of Normandale are pretty much only for buses during those peak times, so they're separating the bus traffic from the passenger vehicle traffic.
So they're being told to go that way, and that's why all that access goes that direction?
Yeah. And I will note, of all the schools we've looked at, this is the one that operates the best probably internally to the site. Everyone follows the rules, which is great, as we watch people pick up and drop off. So the way they're operating now, I think internally works pretty well, keep the buses away from the cars, and keep things moving internally. But yeah, it does push everyone to the one access.
And your report indicated that it was a problem for these periods during the AM and the PM school let-out, but it was a small enough window that overall, you've concluded that nothing needed to be done about it.
Yeah. Yeah, with the levels we see today, it does get very busy during the 20 or so minutes in the morning and 15 minutes in the afternoon, but...
Yeah, and then morning one is probably worse because there's more commuter traffic at that time, because the afternoon one is, does not coincide with the rush hour. But everybody's trying to get to on Highway 100 as well as trying to drop off, so it gets to be a bit of a circus on Eden.
Yeah, for that one and a half block there, it's, it gets busy for that period, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other council members have questions for the traffic engineer? All right, thank you. All right. I see that you've advised the applicant they have 10 minutes for a presentation. Ms. Bodicker, is that right? All right. Well, welcome. Would you reintroduce yourself, please?
Sure. Mayor, council members, city staff, thank you for having us this evening. My name is Jay Fornier. I'm with the Opus Group. I'm one of the architects on the projects. We also have some members from our construction group, as well as OLG, to answer any questions as well. Want to say, first off, thank you to city staff for helping us and shepherd us through this process. It's been a, it's obviously a sophisticated process to get through and make sure we're hitting everything on point, and I think we have with this package. Another thing that I want to speak for Our Lady of Grace is that fortunately for them, it's, they're operating opposite of what you're reading in the news, where their community is actually continuing to grow, and they're, they're bringing in new parishioners. And as part of that, obviously, comes with growth within their facilities as well and modernizing some of their facilities. So really, what this plan is doing is they're coming up on their 75th anniversary of this year, and they're trying to put a plan in place for the next 75 years. And that's what we're really here today for. And so we're trying to build really high-quality buildings that are going to last as long as, high finish as the existing buildings are, to complement the campus and continue to be a good neighbor. Because Our Lady of Grace knows, they obviously care about this community, they've been here for a long time, they want to be a good neighbor as well. So we've had our community outreach neighborhood meeting on June 24th. I would say the project was received very well from the neighbors. We've also had, as Mike touched on, some fireside chats with the community itself, and we got some constructive criticism, and we improved the plans from there. So a few things I did want to touch on. The timing, so the priest residence that we're talking about, the southwest corner, that Phase 1, the goal is to start that this year if possible, assuming weather's going to allow us to do that. And then the goal would be, we're in a capital campaign fundraising process right now, but the hope is that we would start and actually potentially start the activity center and the link building that ties to the school, and maybe even the preschool next year. So just to give you an idea of how quickly it may move, but obviously with capital campaigns, things may adjust, grow, and move around a little bit as we figure out what's best for the community. The roundabout I did want to touch on as well, as the, as the traffic engineer stated, we are comfortable with our impact of that, but as the traffic report stated, it also wouldn't be impacted until we grew to 110 students increase from where we are today. And there's a few options in there. One is staggering start and stop times, and that's already planned to be a part of their program to help relieve some of that traffic congestion that comes with the increased student population growth as well. So we do have some plans in place that will help mitigate some of the traffic issues that come along at the point in time which the community grows. And another thing that does come into play with this is how the site flows. So what you may have seen is how we're going to actually modify and create a new access point.
Sure. If you, you want a handheld microphone, then you can stand next to your, next to your illustration, next to your site map.
It's on. Thank you. So as part of the traffic flow today, right now, all the traffic comes around the backside, and there's pickup-dropoff on the backside of the community. And what we're really trying to do is we're going to reintroduce that traffic flow on the front side of the project. And so this will provide them more stacking to make sure, as the population does grow, that we can keep all the cars on-site in a very organized manner. We are adding the sidewalk down the center, similar to what you might see at like a Cub Foods or Costco, that provides students convenient and safe access out to the ballfields. Today, you've probably driven by and seen the banners up that help kind of guide cars and students and try and distribute all that. We're trying to make it a much safer environment for both the students and the cars, and keep the traffic flow moving freely. The east side of the lot is what we would have as a preschool parking lot, so that would be a different start time than the primary upper school, and that would serve this small function that fronts the gymnasium space. During the afternoons, this would be a bus pickup-dropoff like it functions today. So what we've worked out, OLG's worked out with the city and Edina Schools, is the buses like using Normandale to get in and out and keep them on time and running smoothly. And that's what's really forced, I shouldn't say forced, but really pushed us to move a single source for the parent pickup-dropoff to the north. So we have buses that use the east side, parents use the north side, and that keeps traffic moving smoothly throughout the pickup process and really keeps it at a minimum timeframe of 15 to 20 minutes. One of the other benefits of the gymnasium location is it actually sits lower on the site, about eight feet down. So the goal is where we're taking some of these taller buildings, we're trying to keep their profiles as low as possible to minimize the impact to our neighbors to the south. Obviously, we know they're single-family homes, and we're a relatively large neighbor, but we are trying to be respectful and mass our buildings to be in response to the existing architecture that we have today. Other than that, I'm happy to entertain any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fornier. Any questions for Mr. Fornier? Member Anderson?
Thank you. I wonder, could you comment just a little bit on water management runoff here?
In regards to how we're handling it?
Yes.
So we will be, all the impervious surface, we will be putting some underground storage tanks below the parking lot.
Okay.
So that will be tied into the entire system. So right now, there's an outflow right about the middle of this parking lot that goes off-site. So that's what we'll have, our storm retention, we'll do all the water quality upgrades that's necessary and required, and then it'll be mostly held underground, so you won't see any surface ponding.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Fornier at this point in time? Member Staunton?
Going back to the circulation, you said the east side, so those two entrances. Can you give me a sense of how the bus traffic works off of Normandale Road?
Yeah, so if you're still looking at your screens, they come in from the north at the, I'll say the northeast entrance, and they'll circulate in, and they'll have head-in angle...
So the northeast entrance, so there's another curb cut north of the one that's on the...
Yeah, maybe if we go to the screen, that aerial's still up. So just southeast of the ballfield there, there's a north entrance on that east side.
So there's three...
So there's three total.
There's three curb cuts on the east side.
Correct. So buses, as it works today, the buses come in on the north entry from the east, they come down, and if it's a drop-off, they just kind of circulate through, drop off the kids and leave on the south exit. So there's an in and out effectively for the buses. If their population grows, they're going to have more buses, they, and say it's pickup, which is maybe a longer period of time, the buses will park at angles on either side. The students can use the sidewalks on either side to get safely to the buses load, and then they'll flow out the southeast entry and continue down to Normandale. Because right now, they're, they're partnered with Normandale on sharing buses.
Do you know what proportion of the kids are arriving by bus, and which, what proportion are arriving by family vehicle?
No, I, I want to say it's about, yeah, I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't want to give you the wrong number.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Fornier at this point in time? All right. Thank you. Standby, we may have some for you yet. This is a public hearing matter. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and testify regarding this proposal from Our Lady of Grace? This is your opportunity. You'll have three minutes to provide testimony or make inquiry regarding the project. All right, seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
You had a motion second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Carried. Comments from council members on the project, or is there, is there a motion to start a conversation?
So I'll start.
Yes, Member Staunton?
So I, I think it's a, it's a great project. The only thing I'm concerned about, as you might be able to tell from my questions, is this, is the traffic issue, and it strikes me that, you know, we've, one of the solutions that the traffic engineer talked about was the roundabout, another one was doing a right-in, right-out at Eden Avenue. And I just know from personal experience in that neighborhood that that's a big tie-up right at Eden in the morning, particularly the afternoon. The afternoon, it's bad around school let-out, but it's not, it doesn't coincide as much with rush hour traffic. And it just strikes me that this might be an opportunity, you know, at a time when we're granting a bunch of variances and there's a conditional use permit, to rethink how we, how we do that. And that's the only point I want to raise as part of the discussion for the council.
Member Fehr.
So I would echo that a little bit. When the city did a traffic study for the Grandview area, there was some discussion with OLG about, you know, in time, you know, is, is this, we'll call it the, the access point over toward the railroad track, so the Westerly Access. Should that be a right-in and a right-out, and try to push more of the traffic over off the frontage road and flowing through here? As I look at this master plan, any and all of that's possible in the future. Nothing in this plan is going to preclude it. I think what I'm hearing you say is that we should have some sort of language, similar to what we're, we're talking about with, with the roundabout and when that is triggered, you know, is there some language that says we need to partner on this, that there may be some, and, and we're going to know more probably years from now, how the traffic's behaving. But I, I think there's going to be a roundabout somewhere, I just don't know exactly. It seems like, and maybe Mr. Milner can help answer this. Are you thinking the roundabout is really where the frontage road meets Arcadia, or is it over toward the railroad track?
Correct. It would be there. That's where the major operations are today, 24 hours a day, versus these driveways are just that 20 to 30 minute...
Right.
That max it's been spoken of.
Isn't, isn't that the, you know, if there was a realignment of the exit-entry ramps off of 100, they might line up with the, that Normandale roundabout-type arrangement if it happened in the future?
It could. It could, or be a separate frontage road. I think the, the study will show just...
Right.
A separate entrance, getting rid of that ramp. So the only ramp would be, but it would be pushed to the east, just a little bit next to that bridge.
Right.
So there's options. I think I agree with Mike that nothing on this site plan is going to limit us to what we can do in the future.
Right, and that's, that's what I was looking, I was looking at all, you know, what this plan is showing, and I feel like all of our options are still out there for the future. And I think it's going to have to continue to be a partnership in terms of how, what the actual solutions would be chosen down the road. I, I would like to, if I have the floor for a moment.
Sure.
The, the whole issue of the signage and how we approach that, the Planning Commission chose to not grant that variance as part of the overall package here. I sort of look at it, and, and I guess one question I have is the illustration that you have on the one elevation, what is the actual square footage of that sign in that drawing? Do you know?
It's 100 square feet.
That is 100 square feet. So the idea is if you...
Could you come up, Mr. Fornier, to the microphone, please?
What we're showing, the dashed box around that is 100 square feet, so we're just representing the size of what the sign could be in the future, but not a design. So the, the comment we had received back from Planning Commission, which is valid, is we didn't provide them a design, and they wanted to give us feedback on a sign design. And we don't have any reservations with that necessarily being rejected as part of our requests, but that would be something that we'd have to resubmit regardless as part of a signage package in the future. So the question is, can we just design to 100 square feet and then bring that back for approval, which I believe is just a staff approval that wouldn't come back to the larger council and commission?
And to me, that was one of my concerns. If you just reject the variance request, then they're sort of left not knowing, what does that mean? Am I, are we designing, what kind of sign are we designing, versus a qualified approval of the variance that says, you know, it has to, the final design of the signage needs to be approved, you know, at some point? I, I look at the size, and I think that, this is a big building, and more importantly, it's a, supposed to be 55 mile-an-hour road going by. That's, that's the audience you're trying to grab, and any smaller than that, it's not going to work. So when you look at the scale and the fact that it's not facing the residential neighborhood So when you look at the scale and the fact that it's not facing the residential neighborhood seems like a logical cause for a variance. So I would tend to gravitate toward approving the variance with the stipulation that the final design gets approved later.
All right. Other comments from council members? Member Anderson.
Thank you. I guess I have a specific question. Many of my concerns about traffic have been addressed and discussed. However, the entry ramp onto 100, the south, that has always been a little bit of a difficulty. You have an ambitious project and a really good project laid out, but there will definitely be a lot more traffic, there are more people, more traffic, and ultimately, there'll be development in that area. And I know that on a personal level, when I get onto 100 there, I'm always wondering, what's going to happen next? And I just wonder if it isn't time to really take a good look at that and say, should we anticipate an adjustment there? What should be the plan going that way? It's not necessarily your question, but I just want to bring it forward because it's probably been discussed in the past, but this is probably a good time to do it again. And I think that the roundabout and having plans to do that is a really good idea.
Well, we could certainly try to engage Mindot again in conversation, and we've got a transportation system plan that was done several years ago that I think addresses some of those issues, so thanks for that comment. Member Brindle.
Thank you. So I think, I mean, the sign part of it is, the reason so many of us have questions about it, I think, is because it's not defined enough for us to understand. And to put our approval behind something when we don't fully understand what it is. So Emily, if you would come up and help me understand, with the sign ordinance, it's really in place, you've got a variety of temporary signs that go up for campaigns and different, basketball is registering and scouts are registering, you've got a variety of temporary signs. And so putting all of those aside, really the rest of the sign ordinance is geared around commercial. It's geared around retail, restaurant, and commercial. So now we have a mixed development area and where you've got residential and you've got religious. And looking at the purpose for the two signs that are sketched here, I can see one being building entrance. Because once someone is on-site, they know they're at OLG. So I'm not sure of the purpose of the sign as identifying that they're at OLG because they know they are. If they're passing on Highway 100, there is a sign on Highway 100. Is there a need for another sign to identify on Highway 100? Maybe. I mean, when we look at signs that are identification signs, you've got one for your west side and you, in this case, you've got one for your north side and you've got one for your east side. And that's really where people are going to encounter OLG. And so I'm wondering about the sign on the building, if there is a need to say, this is the door, and the way you were going to do that was to say, Our Lady of Grace, it might be something that, it could be better identified as building entrance. If you want people to use that entrance for a specific purpose, maybe it's door three. If you've got a variety of doors, as I know this site does, it may be like the schools do, you have numbered doors, number one, number two, and those are just right in the glass of the door itself. So if there's an activity happening and it's happening at door three, please enter door three for this. So I guess I would put that out there as more of, to use the sign more as wayfinding, because it is a large campus. Let's see, my only other, my only other question, there are some circulation questions, but that gets into a much larger project than you may have in mind, so I'm not even going to go there. But is the placement of the rectory, and it seems like it's kind of far away and all by itself over there, is there a reason why it's so far away or it seems like it's so far away?
Yeah, I could speak to that, Councilmember Brindle. So originally, if, many of you have been here quite a while, so the rectory used to be out basically right on the highway.
Right.
And it wasn't, as you can imagine, quite a pleasant space to be as the highway became more trafficked and the frontage road became more trafficked. So as part of that, the request from the community was to put it in the back where it's back tucked within the neighborhood and be a little bit more secluded, so it is more of a respite for those that are staying in that place. And it actually gives them a little bit more privacy than being out in the front door. So it was preferred by the community to put them back there, and we think it's actually a little bit better fitting to have a house against a house before it steps to the church at that southwest corner.
Okay. And its architecture is going to be more like the church than it is like the neighborhood?
Correct. It'll be in brick and it'll be similar materials to the church, so it'll be a nice transition down to the neighborhood.
Okay. And it's 2,600 square feet?
Correct.
And meant to house five people?
Five people.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's basically a house?
It's a house, and then there's a garage that's kind of tucked into the hill, so we're using the hill to the advantage again to keep the volume and the profile of the home as low as possible, so it transitions well to the neighborhood.
All right. Well, OLG is a wonderful community member. I really, I don't, I don't have anything negative to say about the project itself. It's always been an active, active in social justice, active in, and just a really great community member. So it's exciting to see the improvements and renewal. And it's been a long time, I remember when the sanctuary was redone, and that's got to be 25 years ago. And so this will be a nice, the next generation of renewal of OLG, so that's terrific. Thank you, Emily.
This might be for Director Milner. So I'm looking at your engineering letter that has the traffic study detail impacts on it. Member Staunton touched on this briefly. So the trigger for a $40,000 payment is what you're recommending be made to contribute to a potential roundabout solution is the enrollment increase of at least 110 students. What I'm concerned about is we, the public works property right across the street, and if we figure out what to do with that, that alone may trigger the need to make some adjustments here. And while whatever we do there may affect overall volume, at present, I see from your memo that OLG's contributing approximately 13% to 18% of the current and future traffic volume. Those percentages might go down, you know, depending on what happens over at the public worksite, but I'm just wondering about the condition that triggers the cash payment, if we've got that figured out right. You know, because it still seems to me that they'd be a significant contributor to the traffic volume, even if we built some multifamily housing over there. We've talked about senior co-op over there, for example, and some other things. So that's my concern. Do we have, do we have the right triggering event, the right condition in place to receive a contribution from OLG on a roundabout? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, there's two triggers. It's either triggered by development or it's triggered by the city's street reconstruction program. If that's the case, they're going to pay for construction of that street and intersection by today's standards, special assessments. And we would assess them for Eden Avenue or we'd assess them for Normandale Road when either one of those got reconstructed. This condition is just to address the traffic impacts just at the intersection, but if we have much more development on that street, Eden's going to be reconstructed someday and then everybody that's adjacent to that, if it's the same policy, would be assessed for those improvements. So we're just looking at it from what's the impacts on their potential project in the future with 110 students.
Okay.
And the number is what we used with many of those applicants at 66th and New York. That's where we came up with that dollar value of 40,000. That was a similar, that, three of those corners all contributed to traffic improvements at 66th and New York.
All right. Well, again, folks, that beautiful campus, you know, love driving up Highway 100 and looking over at the OLG campus, it's just a fantastic addition, as Member Brindle said to our community. And the expansion of it will be consistent architecturally, it'll just enhance the beauty of the whole location. To the signage issue, the issue that Member Fisher raised, I tend to agree with Member Fisher. When I looked at the elevations and I see the variance request for signage of 100 square feet, and I look at it on the building itself, it's entirely proportional to the building. And that, to me, is an important consideration, that we know that we're eventually going to have to decide what's going to go there from a signage standpoint in terms of materials and message, I guess, or maybe not as much the message as the materials, but I wouldn't be uncomfortable with granting the variance for the 100 square foot, knowing that you have to come back for approval on the signage. I don't know how other members of the council feel about that.
Well, I would state it like they have on the page that I'm looking at, and that is no larger than 100 square feet.
And that's something you'd be comfortable with? All right, so-
Mr. Mayor, can I take one step back?
Sure.
I just want to clarify one thing, just to make sure that, you know-
Mr. Fournier, would you come back up, please?
These meetings are, you know, being recorded and I don't want a problem in the future. When you said the rectory is for a five-person house, there are actually six bedrooms, is one just sort of guest bedroom? Is that what you, I just want to make sure that we're clear, so somebody doesn't come back later and say you didn't approve a six-bedroom house.
Right, it's more for visitors that come in for their training or maybe they're studying and they're stopping in.
All right, so I just want everyone to be aware, it's six bedrooms, but probably more like five priests living there.
At most.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just to be clear.
Okay. So the resolution that staff has drafted proposes we approve the matter, approving a conditional use permit with variances, but deny the sign variance. So I'm wondering, I'm just pulling up the resolution now. Director Teague or Ms. Bodicker, where is the language with respect to the denial? Very end, section four.
Yeah, it's on page four.
There it is.
Yeah, so if the council would like, you could strike section four, the denial, and add the approval of the sign variance, and we can add the findings that the proposed signage would have a limited, a limited impact to the surrounding residential neighborhood and fits the size and scale of the proposed building.
All right. And it would not, no greater than 100 square feet. All right, so strike four and you could add that as condition six? Is that what you're proposing?
Correct. Or we would add to the list of the requested variances, was a variance to allow a 100-square-foot sign. So that could just be added to the, all of the list of the variances that are being granted.
But to the, to the planning commission's concern, do we have to add language that the signage has to ultimately be approved, or is that just a given?
Approved by, are you thinking the planning commission or staff?
Staff, I think.
I don't, the planning commission was obviously concerned about what future signage would look like. I don't share that concern based on the aesthetic of the campus, they're not going to put up something tacky for a sign. But I'm assuming that's kind of where the planning commission was concerned here.
It was.
Because they didn't see a picture of it.
Correct. Yeah, it would be subject to a sign permit and, which would be approved by staff.
All right. Comfortable with that.
Okay. So, Member Fisher, would you care to make the motion? Adopting Resolution 2019-64 with deletion of section four and the adding into the variance section, the language we discussed or Director Teague discussed regarding signage approval. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion second. Resolution 2019-64 is modified and discussed. Any further conversation? Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming over that interested in this matter. And then the next matter in front of us is, there's a proposal for a preliminary and final plat on an existing outlot at Oak Lane and-
We've got a, we've got a second public hearing. We are setting, continuing a public hearing to September-
That's just where I'm going with this.
Oh, I thought you were moving, sorry.
No, I'm on that item right now.
Sorry.
That's okay. And that matter has been requested to be moved to September 17, 2019, for city council action at that point in time, not this evening. So is there a motion to continue the public hearing on the Oak Lane matter to September 17, 2019?
So moved.
Okay. Motion second to move the Oak Lane matter, seeking a preliminary and final plat to September 17, 2019 meeting? Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, reports and recommendations, and we're going on in that portion of the agenda, first of all, to a sketch plan review. And Director Teague, you have the introductory comments on this matter?
I do, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The location of this sketch plan is Olinger and Vernon. So it's the southeast corner of Olinger and Vernon. This site was platted a number of years ago for five villa townhomes. It sits vacant today. The site itself is part of the Oldie Vernon Homeowners Association. There were five units to be built consistent with the existing villas. Again, it remains vacant. What the applicant is proposing here is to build five villa townhomes somewhat similar to what's there. They would also utilize a portion of the adjacent single-family residential lot to the west, and then also, right on the corner of Olinger and Vernon, they would build a 10-unit, three-story condo building. So that request would require a comprehensive plan amendment, as outlined in the staff memo, and a rezoning, and there's a number of variances that would be associated as well. Most importantly with this one, within that existing outlot, the hope, for any change to occur to that five-lot plat, it has to be agreed upon by 75% of the Oldie Vernon Homeowners Association. In fact, the city is part of that agreement as well, that the city is obligated to only issue a building permit for that five, that five-lot plat. So before any formal application is made here, there would have to be an agreement with whatever is proposed for that, that five-lot plat site, where 75% of the homeowners association would agree to the plans. We just wouldn't consider an application. Or if an application were made, the city is really obligated to only approve a five, a five-lot townhome plat, per that agreement. So with that, Dave Remick is here from City Homes to present the project.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Remick. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, council members, staff. As Kerry said, I'm Dave Remick with City Homes. Our offices are at 3918 Sunnyside Road. I have with me, well-
Good evening. Ken Piper with Tannic Architects, 118 East 26th Street, Minneapolis.
So what we are here tonight to discuss is a proposal or a sketch to add five, or to build out five villas and add a 10-unit, three-story condominium project, or building, to the site. We, to echo Kerry's comments, expect that, obviously, we would need to get in agreement with the HOA to do this, because it does require, you know, amending their existing property and needing 75%. So we're here- existing property and needing 75%. So, we're here tonight to get feedback from you all, and we were here last week to get from the Planning Commission, because what we want to try to simultaneous do is get your input and feedback on our sketch. So, then when we are working with the members, if we get to an agreement with them, we don't want to come here and have something that you all wouldn't approve. So, that's the reason for the simultaneous nature. Nothing formal has been voted on, or even presented to the members to vote on. We have had meetings with the board, phone calls with the board, and have had informational meetings with the homeowners. So, we've been gathering their comments and their feedback. What we have brought with us tonight is a reflection of some of that commentary. This is a little bit different than what was presented for the Planning Commission's sketch plan review. So, we previously had, perhaps, a plan you're looking at in your packet, had two villa homes here with a shared driveway. And I can show that here. So, that was what was previously submitted and probably in your packets. There was some preference expressed for reorienting these homes, and some concern expressed at this 20-foot setback, which would be a variance from the 25-foot standard. So, what we did is, we are, we would include a larger portion of this lot into the development to allow us to have all five villa homes face and load off of and onto Vernon. The rest of the plan stays the same, as to what's in your packet. And I can maybe let Ken talk to some more of the specific elements of it, or if you have questions now, certainly happy to address those. Otherwise, I think we can talk a little bit more specifically about sizing and where we're kind of, what we're proposing currently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here. I think we're fully understanding of the fact that this is an ongoing conversation, and that we understand the process to which we have to embark on to get approval. And so, here, we have, as Dave mentioned, we have kind of some comments, and we certainly appreciated the comments that we got back from the Planning Commission. And so, looking at that further, I think some of what has been mentioned here is actually being able to cite the villa homes, five of them, so that they have access off of Vernon Lane. Furthermore, we're talking about the condo building over to the north and west of the site. We are looking at some setback relief, and primarily, the purpose of that, as we've heard some of the feedback, is to create a buffer, as much as we can, between the condo building and the villa homes, the proposed villa homes. That does allow us, you know, at this point, just talking about a little bit of mass of the building, we're talking about an overall height, at this point, of about 38 feet, three stories, 10 units. The first two floors are four units per floor. We're talking about access off Olinger, submerging the parking, so at this point, getting as much of the parking as we can within the structure of the proposed building. Again, coming up two levels, that's about 24, 25 feet, stepping back 10 feet, and then up for the third floor. So, the third-floor footprint will be smaller, two units on the third floor. And at any point here, we have an orientation here, as you can see here, would be, you'd have a total of really four to six units oriented at any point in each direction of the proposed building. Again, the step back, the buffers, we're looking at those as ways to appropriately cite the condo building. We continue to look at issues that will be really important and sensitive to the project. We have no design at this point, other than to say that the product that we are presenting offers a complement, we believe, to the rest of what's existing. As we look at massing, this is the corner here of Vernon Avenue and Olinger. So, the condo building will be located in this area, and the villa homes will then come in and connect with Vernon Lane. You can see some of what we're suggesting here, with the building itself pushed toward Olinger and Vernon Avenue, and then creating an area of trees and buffer to help with the sightlines toward Vernon Lane. Also, you can see here, some of what we're starting to imply with the second floor, 10-foot setback on either side, all sides, and then up to the 38-foot total height. You can see here that, as part of the mass as well, each unit will have ample outdoor-type porch patio-type spaces. And so, you can start to see where some of those come in to help us with the mass at this point. Again, still a work in progress, but understanding that these are the things we need to really study to come, to get consensus on the project. We're starting to imply some other things on the site itself. I think we're paying attention a little bit now, just item back to the parking. The parking requirement that we would have for the condo building would be 12 indoor and eight outdoor, so a total of 20 for the 10 units. What we're actually proposing, just to ease the site, is that we would actually have 16 covered stalls, and actually, and do four on the outside. Furthermore, six of those stalls would be tandem units, and so, tandem stalls, and so, we would actually have a total of 26 parking spaces, 22 indoor and four on the exterior. Looking at this point, at saving some of the mature vegetation, trees on the site, and at this point, that's sort of where we are. The other thing as well, with, in addition to the step back, we're thinking that there, there definitely are color schemes that we can employ to the condo building that will make it look more in line, in terms of addressing some of the height and those kinds of things.
With respect to the new schematic, where you've got the five proposed townhomes in line on the street, which makes them look more compatible with what is already there in Old Vernon, what does that do with respect to your setback requirements? Are you in compliance on the front yard setbacks, and consistent with what you see in the rest of Old Vernon?
Yeah. Mayor O'Leary, to answer your question here, you can see that, you can see the line of the setback here. So, we are asking for some minor variances in citing the villa homes. So, you will see there that, you know, these are, in this case, the garage unit is a little over here, as it is in this case here, and over here.
All right. Thanks for that clarification. Council members, thoughts? Member Anderson, do you want to start with your thoughts, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Just a couple of thoughts. I'm certain that you must own 5705.
Pardon me?
You guys own 5705, I assume?
We have that under agreement.
Under contract or...
Yeah, we have it under contract with the owner, yes.
Okay. So, then, the partial release and so on there, the new legal descriptions don't really enter into this conversation. You own it, and you'll control that internally?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Then, I guess, the status of the HOA board, I don't have that directly in front of me, but I saw a memo. The staff mentioned that August 27, they were voting, but apparently, that didn't happen. There is a memo here dated the 28th, that seems to embrace the villa homes, and also stating that they, you'd need that same approval for your condominium project. Is that an accurate statement?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah. And it appeared, from the tone of that letter, and again, I don't, I could pull it up here, but it didn't seem that they were prepared to approve the condominium project. Is that accurate?
So, we're not akin to their internal deliberations. For discussions today, nothing's been formally submitted for them to approve. There are definitely questions and concerns with the condo building. I don't want to mislead anybody that they are, they've not approved that, and they've expressed some concern, some strong concern there. But we've not put it forward in front of the entire homeowners association for, we have not presented anything formally to them.
Okay. So, since this is just a conversation tonight, based on your sketch plan, I guess the things that I see are, I'm not quite certain how the condo... The villa homes, I think, are a very creative use of that space, and I like it even better that you have them in alignment there. Seems to fit into that project a little bit better. But I take a look at, not only, you own 5705, but then I look at the impact at 5709, 5717. I look at the impact of a taller building, higher building, that kind of goes over the single families there on Merrill. And I notice your request for the setback variance, which is significant. And so, those would be, those are my concerns. I don't think, I just don't think we're quite there with the HOA board. And, I mean, just based on the tone of their memo, I'm not certain that you'll get there. But I do think you've got the potential for a worthy project in there, if it's scaled down a little bit. That would be what I would see. You're asking for 10 units at this time, seven, it would fit into the current zoning. So, might be something to consider, is just scaling back a little bit from 10, dropping that, which might in turn lead to a more positive, or potential, more positive outcome with the HOA board. And I don't think it would have the same kind of effect, then, on the properties going north from there either, as well as Merrill.
Thank you.
I think, Member Brindl.
So, there's an approved plan here from 2001. Is, what are your thoughts about just building what was already approved?
Our belief is, the approved plan has three homes, roughly, here, and two separate ones here, for where the, just the cost of acquisition of the land makes that project not feasible. So, we would, we would not proceed with that plan.
Okay. So, the cost of acquisition of the land is what's causing you to need to add the condominiums?
That's part of it. Also, primarily, through our experience at our Edina Flats project, that is currently nearing, a stage of construction where people are going to be moving in here before the end of the year. The feedback we're getting from there has been positive for the sizing of the units that we have in this plan, with that 1,500 to 2,000 square feet. Our feedback that we're getting from that project indicates there's additional demand for condos that are finished similar to what we have done at Edina Flats, and oriented in a way where it doesn't feel like a larger apartment building, or long hallways, or what have you. So, it's just as much about informed from our experience there, and what we anticipate the market reception would be for this size of a project.
Okay. Let me see if I understand you. So, are you thinking that these would look more like the Edina Flats than they do Old Vernon?
Not necessarily externally. I'm talking just the footprint of the condos themselves.
All right.
Councilmember Brindl, I think, just on your question as well, just to, in looking at the way it's currently approved, I think there might be some challenges to the two homes that are kind of off of Vernon, or the sites that are there, in terms of access to those, and also, the confluence of that, perhaps, to Vernon Lane. So, I think, in, just in reference to your question, that this kind of a layout here might lend itself better to access on Vernon Lane to the five.
All right. So, let's talk about the condominium building. I appreciate the setback and, and the undulation on the front of it. I think, as much as what you're showing is just a demonstration of massing, you've, you do have some design elements in there that you're starting to think about, and I applaud those. Can we get something other than a flat roof on it?
The flat roof helps us minimize the height and fit in the three stories, from a design standpoint. You know, we could certainly be open to exploring alternatives and looking at what those could be.
It'd be nice, because it's surrounded by gabled buildings, and it's part of a neighborhood of gabled buildings. So, I guess, I'd like to see something other than a flat roof.
Thanks.
Just from, just from my eye.
And councilmember, I think, in that as well, I think you alluded to the fact that we're very early in the design stages. But I could foresee, perhaps, that maybe those porch elements might have pitch to them, that, you know, that might help balance some of this off.
Wow, and that's similar to Edina Flats. That's what they did there. Yeah. Okay. All right. Generally, I've been wondering when this was going to be completed, because that, that corner of Old Vernon has always just kind of been empty, and there's been a sign there, and, and somebody's trampoline has been there. And so, so, I like the fact that it's moving forward, to the, to the degree that there would be some massing back in the corner, on that future, the future building that is set in the corner on that south side. I would just, I'll be curious to see what happens with that. The neighbors along Merrill, to the east, I guess, are, I mean, they, they pride their backyards, and they're very close to Old Vernon, the, the, the homes along Old Vernon. So, so, I just want to make sure that the pitch for stormwater and all of that, as that starts to come into play, and I know that's down the road a ways, but, but make sure you have that in mind as well, because that was an issue when the initial homes were built.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Member Stockton?
So, my, my reaction is pretty big picture. It's, you know, I think from a very big-picture perspective, what we have been focusing on in the community, and what, to me, we're talking about is, the strength of the community is single-family neighborhoods organized around great schools and great parks. And we have some opportunities to add some density in some places that are commercial, formerly commercial areas, that are turning over, morphing, changing. And so, I am not in favor of seeing bigger massing buildings in the single-family neighborhoods. So, the villa townhome notion works for me, but a larger three-story building with multiple units, and it isn't working for me. So, to me, it's about the density, and you want to be matching the density. You can do things with townhomes along Vernon that might be helpful to back up to Vernon, or, you know, a lot of creative site planning. But I think you're, you're headed toward too much density here, and I'd rather see you try and match the density that's already there. Even if you want to do that with attached homes, I'm not, I don't have a problem with that. But I am not, I mean, my initial inclination is not to be pushing the envelope on density in a neighborhood like this, where you've got single-family homes surrounding it on all sides. So, that's my reaction.
Thank you. Thank you. Member Fisher.
So, overall, the, the five villas that you're proposing, I think it was an improvement in laying it out the way you did. I wouldn't have a problem with those small variances, because the curvy nature of the road, I mean, you'd never know. If someone didn't tell you that it needed a variance, you wouldn't, no one would know. I have, I'm a little conflicted on the whole condo building idea, because when you, so if you zoom out sort of the medium look, you know, there are apartment buildings across the street, there's a lot of that. I was going to ask Kerry, this would require rezoning, right? It would require amending our comp plan.
Correct.
My question is, the height of the bill, you said the height was what?
Thirty-eight feet.
So, 38 feet. What would a single-family home maximum height be there?
It could be 40 feet.
Right, that's, so, from a height perspective, it's not really ultimately an issue, but there's sort of the mass and the overall density thing. And so, on the one hand, when I look at the, sort of the micro area, I'd say, well, this area already has higher-density buildings, but, but to councilmember Staunton's point, I kind of agree, when you really look at the big picture, the pact we've kind of made to our residents is that we are going to build our density in very strategic places, and that they shouldn't feel surprised, I guess, in their single-family neighborhoods that we're going to come along and drop things in, even though I kind of feel this is not a super heavy drop in this case. And I, I agree, I think what you're getting at is, maybe instead of the condo building type element, that maybe attached townhomes or something that's a slightly lesser density, but could take on that corner, and you could get the, the driving, you know, in back behind it or something, might be a more elegant solution there. It's probably not going to get you the density you want, and I don't, I don't know what that all means in the numbers, but as the conversation was unfolding, you know, it tend, you know, because of the packet and the fact that the HOA has a say in all of this, I think we're very much focused on, well, what do those people think? And what I think would surprise, maybe not surprise us, but what would kind of shipwreck us, is what the people across the street and around the other side, I think councilmember Anderson referred to that as well, that they're going to have a real strong opinion as well about, you know, what's the mass of the building and the density that's going in right next to them. So, I would tend to, and I like what you've done over on Old Vernon, but I'd try something a little different on the corner.
Thank you. I join member Brindle, Brindle in saying that, and I guess, I guess the rest of my colleagues too, in saying that when this was approved in '01, you know, I thought it would happen rather quickly, that we'd see some townhomes in there that matched up with what's in Old Vernon right now. But it hasn't happened for many years, and maybe it's reflective of the price of the land, that the person who owns the land thinks it's worth, but maybe they haven't given proper consideration of the fact that they've got to, they've got to overcome a 75% vote by the HOA on approval of whatever goes in there. So, that was something that that owner agreed to at that point in time, and maybe that thought has diminished a bit in his mind in terms of relevance or importance, but certainly that requirement would seem to me to reflect on the price of the property. That aside, I have to say, I join member Fisher in being a little bit conflicted. My first reaction was, yeah, I like all the, all the townhomes, the five townhomes that match up with what's already in Old Vernon. And I'm assuming they're all, I think it had to be 1,700 square feet on the main floor and 1,700 feet on the lower level? Isn't that right?
Yes.
They all match up that way?
Yeah, the guidelines are-
Trying to come in with a, with a more undersized product.
No, it would, we'd want it to fit in with the existing.
So, they all fit in well with what's there. That's what I, that's what it looked like from the site plan, so I think that's a good thing. My first reaction on the condos was, I thought, no, not there, but then I get to thinking, well, wait a minute, now there's Blakely Ridge Townhomes, or, or condos are just down the road, a couple blocks. There's another condominium project across the street west of the car repair shop, which is an anomaly there. But those things have been there for a long time, and housing has kind of grown up around them. This is a little bit more like plunking an airport in, you know, a neighborhood where the airport didn't predate, it's not like adding on to the airport, the airport didn't predate what happened there. Maybe that's not the best analogy, but it still doesn't feel quite right to me to have multi-family building on the corner, even though it's a busy street, and I can see where it's a challenge to figure out how to make the best use of that property for whatever's going to go in there. You guys are doing a great job down at Valley View and Wooddale. It's a very nice product. I think the overall height of that building with the gabled roof is probably not over 38 feet, 40 feet at the most.
It's 38 feet.
38 feet, yeah, so it can be done, to member Brindle's point. And, and be two feet shorter than really a single-family home, but despite that, we still have that density issue, and I, I just don't feel comfortable about it, moving that into that neighborhood so close to what's on Olinger, and then what's right at Old Vernon. It just doesn't feel right to me for some reason. And I wish I could be more objective about it, but sometimes you, you deal in the world of subjectivity, and it just doesn't feel like it fits properly there for the neighborhood to me. So, those are my comments generally as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, correspondence and petitions, anything other than what's on the dais this evening? Manager Neil?
No, nothing more than that.
All right. And aviation noise update, member Brindle, anything there?
No, nothing really new, just a reminder that the next noise oversight committee meeting is September 8th, MAC headquarters at 1:30.
Very good, thank you. Manager Neil, anything supplemental to that?
Nothing more than that, no.
All right. Mayor and council comments, member Fisher, I think. We'll start with you this evening.
Nothing for me tonight.
Member Staunton.
Kaylin, can you put up that picture for me? Every couple of weeks, we get a lot of comments from residents, and sometimes they include images. In the last week, we got this image, and it's not from Alabama, it's not from Mississippi, it's not from Minneapolis, this is in Edina, Minnesota, and it's at Pamela Park, and it's disgusting. And I thought it was important, as uncomfortable as it is, for us to put this up on the screen tonight, so that people could see it. And we do a lot of thinking in our community, and a lot of talking about how inclusive we are, and how welcoming we are. And if you think for just a minute about being a person of color walking past this, and think about how included or how welcome they might feel. I don't know what to do about this, but I know that we can't continue just saying, oh, isn't that too bad? This isn't the only instance. We've had numerous instances like this, and as an elected official in this community, I have to speak out and say, this is just wrong, and we can't just outsource our outrage about it. We have to be, every one of us has an obligation to talk about this stuff, to make it clear to people that it's unacceptable, and to walk the walk. I mean, we're talking about inclusivity, we're talking about welcoming, and this is not. And this is ridiculous, and I, I'm beside myself about what it says about our community. And, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to bring this up, because I think it's important that we make people experience some of the discomfort that some members of our community are obviously still experiencing. And I don't have a solution. We've done a lot of good things to progress in this community, but we obviously haven't done enough, and we need to do better. And I will make it my own effort to do better, but, and I know all of the people on this dais are doing everything they can, I know the staff is doing everything they can, but this is for communities, this is to talk about to your kids, this is to talk about to your neighbors, this is to talk about with your friends. We can't have this, this is just unacceptable. And I wish I had a magic wand to make it go away, but it's not going to go away. And people who think that the solution is to be colorblind, it's okay, when you're a white person, you don't have to deal with something like this. So, I don't have anything else to say about it, other than deliberately trying to make everybody uncomfortable, so that they can know what it feels like for somebody who's a person of color walking by this to feel. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Member Brindle.
I hate seeing that. So, I bet we can talk to the Crime Prevention Fund and get some suggestions on what to do. We've had incidents at park buildings, some vandalism in the past, and put video surveillance and gotten video coverage. It doesn't always lead to an identifier, but sometimes just having the camera there is enough to, enough to keep someone from doing something that doesn't rate high on the what's-right scale. So, a couple of things. September 19th is Constitution Day, so on September 16th, I will be talking about the U.S. Constitution with second graders, who are going to be studying the three branches of government, and how our government is structured, and when it was formed. And it's always amazing to talk to second graders and have a very grown-up conversation about the Constitution and the judicial branch, and it's amazing the questions they came up with, and the observations they have. So, I'm looking forward to that. So, I am, so I'm going to talk about Lime scooters, not my favorite thing. We are getting to the end of summer, which means the Lime scooters are going to be leaving our parks, and curbs, and sidewalks, and front yards. And so, I'd like to see the city reconsider, or seriously consider whether to continue that contract with Lime scooters. In other cities, I have seen people use them for commuting. Downtown Minneapolis, I see people picking up a scooter and using it for commuting. I have never seen anyone commute on a scooter in Edina. I've only seen them used recreationally. At Centennial Lakes, you'll have people walking and strolling, and then two people on a scooter buzzing by, and it's like, are you looking at what's going on around you at this park? If there hasn't been an accident yet, there will be. And the scooters actually are in terrible shape, they're beat up, so I don't, I just, I don't see a need for them in Edina. It, they, they just haven't, in my opinion, demonstrated, or the use of them hasn't demonstrated that people use them for what they were intended for, and that is commuting. I think people consider them to be toys. So, I, I would like to see the city either, well, reconsider the contract for next year, and seriously consider not re-upping with Lime, or any other scooter.
What is the timing of the end of the contract term on the pilot program with Lime?
I believe it's March, but they're going to probably get rid of the scooters, you know, mid-November like last year, and then we would engage them again and see if we wanted to continue it, and we'd bring that back to the city council.
I can't see them putting them out in March, I mean-
No, they didn't even get them out till early July this year, so it's really been a real short season again.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I think, well, I'll add one more comment. There is a, a way that we could restrict the use around Centennial Lakes Park. You put a GEO code around that facility, a user would come in, and they, if they don't remove it from that area, they're continually charged. So, they have a benefit of getting that thing out of the Centennial Lakes Park area, if we define what areas they can and can't use. It could be a way to try it for the next couple of months. If we can establish that quickly, we could try to see if that works, if the council so chooses.
There's even the possibility of geo-fencing-
Yep.
-them, where the, the company has the ability to slow them down, or even stop them in certain, you know, in certain geographic areas, if a city prohibits that.
I think the more focal concerns have come from folks in country club.
Yeah, they have, but, and I've heard about that, and that's why I preface this with in front yards and on sidewalks, but certainly what I've witnessed is, is at Centennial Lakes.
Your Honor, we, when we entered into the memorandum of understanding with Lime, it was for a three-year time period, it ends in March of 2019. The MOU, though, can be canceled by either, either party with 60 days' notice, so if it is something that council's interested in, they are almost at the end of their season, we, the last, last season, we get back a slew of data about how much they're used and where they're used. We could bring that to you in the form of a kind of a year-end report, we could have a discussion about whether you want to even entertain them for the upcoming year, or you want to just issue them the, the notification now, so that they know where there's, where they stand with us in 2020.
I think it's a good idea to look at the data personally, but I'd like to make a decision yet this year on whether or not we're going to renew them.
We can set that up?
Okay. Member Anderson.
Thank you. I am going to pile on the scooters a little bit, however, I just want to commend councilmember Staunton for bringing forward a very, very important topic, and presenting that to the community, as well as just to point a discussion here. Thank you for doing that. It's important that that was done, thank you. On scooters, eight weeks ago, six weeks ago, I was in a parking lot with a couple of little kids in the backseat over at Noodles, and Twilight, so, you know what you do in the cars, to say, is everybody locked in, how, where are we? And start to move out, and I noticed two scooters flying across this parking lot, and dark, and I see, you know, young people on them, just screaming across this parking lot. Isn't that interesting? And as soon as I started to accelerate, a kid came up between two cars, directly in front of me, pulled directly in front of my car, and then moved on down to catch his buddies. Normally, if I don't have those kids in my backseat, I'm popping the accelerator a little bit and pulling them out. I would have hit that kid, I would have taken him out, I don't know, I, there would have been an injury, one way or the other. And that got my attention that night, and then all of us received some communication over in the country club area, and went over and took a look at that, and noticed this. Now, on the day that I was there, only saw one scooter there. Since that time, there were some other reports of others now laying around, but this is what, my, my thought pattern there was, this scooter was laying flat on a sidewalk, across a sidewalk. Well, okay, if I'm, at, at night, if I go out and walk my dog, and I'm not looking down, I'm falling over that thing. So, you know, now we're two-for-two on, on public safety, or the potential for public safety issues. Those scooters are just kind of left indiscriminately around, and so they could be in the street, that could happen, just as easily as on a sidewalk. The nature of their design means that they won't be leaning against a tree. A bike is normally upright and out of the way, and there's probably a little more utility. Last thing on this, on scooters is, I think sometimes of the, of the typical user, at least that I have observed, and I think, you know, going over to a football game, or going through a parking lot, or, you know, whatever happens, we're just- lot or whatever happens, we're just really a distraction away from a serious accident from somebody really getting hurt. So when the time comes to consider renewal of a scooter contract, I'll look forward to that conversation.
Member Staunton made a compelling presentation here a few minutes ago. The person in our community who reported that incident over at Pamela Park was the co-chair of our Race and Equity Committee, who was very commissioned, was very near to Pamela Park. And I had written back to her and said that we would raise this this evening as an issue and talk about it a little bit. So I'm pleased that you brought it up. It's reflective of the, I think, the great danger to democracy and what we're seeing in our country right now with the escalating divisiveness that's occurring all across America. And it gets expressed not only with divisiveness in terms of my team, your team, but it gets expressed, the extension of it all is expression of hate in some form. And so we end up in our town with, even in Edina, we would say, with racist graffiti and anti-Jewish incidents. And we've had, I think, three this summer, and we have not caught yet the culprits. And even though the, I think the Crime Fund has put out a reward for information leading to the arrest of the perpetrator or perpetrators of these racist graffiti and the anti-Jewish comments that are being made or incidents that have occurred. And just wondering, manager Neil, if we're any closer to any kind of arrest determination as to who may be responsible, even if it doesn't lead to an arrest?
Well, we typically don't comment on ongoing investigations, so at this point, there isn't anything I can share with you.
Sure. But it is an ongoing investigation.
Absolutely.
All right. Okay. Thank you. So for the folks in our community, I'm sure everybody in our town joins us in the dismay and the disheartening nature of seeing this in any community, much less our own. So really appreciate your comments this evening. Thank you. Got a few other things to cover with folks. At South Suburban Development Summit on Thursday, September 12th, did we make a decision on what we're going to do on HRA that morning? Because I noticed I'm on a panel at a little after 8:00 and then another one at 9:00.
I think there's only going to be three of you available and maybe not even that. So I think we may have to cancel that HRA meeting that day.
Okay. All right. And you're working, I'm sure diligently on the presentation we're going to make-
Absolutely.
-for Edina?
It's going to be a star.
Because member Fisher told me he's not coming if I'm just winging it.
I heard him say that, yeah.
I need a well-prepared presentation if I'm going to-
He's going to ask for his money back.
It's going to be good stuff.
We had one of our residents write and comment on the active use of people at the Van Valkenburg Dog Park, but so many of them don't have a permit or a collar that gets issued by the city, and she gets pretty frustrated by it. I understand it will be so. I think she said she was down there one day and maybe two or three dogs were wearing a collar out of the dozen or so that were there. And what are we going to do about it, was her question. And I'm sure we've tried to do things about it in the past, but have you taken this under advisement and directed staff to do something about it?
Yes, I have. The chief and I are going to talk about it in more depth tomorrow.
Okay. All right. And then there was a person that had some safety concerns around 4600 France Avenue, crosswalks, talked about crosswalks being needed. Did you get that? Let me pass this note down. Maybe she just wrote to me. Oh, she wrote to Nick, too, I think. Baller, if you pass that down, we'll give it to Chad. You can take a look at Sally Usen from our community. Nice note from the new president of the university, I think to all of us, really, saying she was pleased to be here and telling everybody in every community that's involved in government that she's pleased to be here. I had an interesting email from Pamela Ann Morford, who's, I think, over near Braemar. And this is the first incident where I've seen someone warning about the health risks of 5G technology. We've talked a lot about the other elements of it, you know, the control of the right-of-way issue, the amount they're going to pay for access to the right-of-way, the amount they'll pay on an ongoing basis and fees. But this was the first time I had seen anything from anybody, whether it's national or local, expressing some concern over potential health impacts. And I'm wondering if we can have somebody take a look at that or have the community health folks take a look at that issue. Because if that's something we need to be concerned about, we need to add that to the repertoire of arguments we're making on 5G and control of the right-of-way. There was some residential construction damage. I got an email on this from a resident named Nikki Williams. Some driveway damage. Does any- do you want this email, too?
Pass it down, please.
And then I guess I had a duplicate copy of the 5G warning. And then there was one that came to you, too, Chad, I think, on the restorative work by Frege's. Some folks being upset. Kathleen Dahlheimer, I think in particular, about the quality of the work that this Frege's has done in terms of the-
Hydro seating.
Yeah, the hydro seating on the right-of-way or next to driveway aprons, that it was substandard quality and they've redone it and it still doesn't work. Is that something you're addressing as well?
Since the project started in 18, I have a copy of that one.
All right, okay.
I feel like I'm the forward button on your email.
We had a work session two weeks ago where we talked about budget issues and our city finance situation. And there were some residents from our community there. On social media, following that meeting, a bunch of information flowed out onto social media that was not accurate. Assertions about the level of debt that we had in our community, assertions about potential adverse impact on our credit rating, the fact that we were potentially strapped for cash. And I just want people in our community to know that there is no community in better shape financially or more financially responsible than Edina. And you will see key messages on that topic from both the city manager, I think it was posted this afternoon, and also from me on Council Connect. And one of the issues we didn't cover, and I think member Fisher's going to take a look at it, was the issue of- that was raised at the work session about debt per capita. You know, why is ours higher than other cities? But in terms of the, it's pretty discouraging to see the misrepresentations about the debt and how data gets distorted. And so these facts that are now out there, I think, should be helpful. Walk with the mayor is on the 21st of September. I can't do it. I'm going to be out of town. Member Staunton's out of town. Are you back by then? Anyway, if somebody can cover that for me or multiple people, that would be wonderful. If not, then I'm thinking, I wonder if we should try to move it to the 14th of September, which is still a pretty good lead time, and then I could cover it. So, manager Neil, if you'd ask communications to think about that, that would be good. And then I had a call from, actually, one of our former council members, Alice Holbert, who has a special needs adult child and had that person in a art class at the Art Center. And now there's been a release from the Art Center saying that if you're going to be participating in Art Center projects, you've got to be fully capable of doing these. Functioning on your own is the way I interpreted the message. And so she's thinking that that's not legal, you know, that they're- And it begged kind of the broader question of some of the great work we do, I know, is in the adaptive program area. Like, we've got the best adaptive golf program in the state and, I think, probably the highest participation rate in the state. And so her question was, should we be looking at other things where we have adaptive programs, including at the Art Center? And I thought it was an excellent point, and I wanted to raise it with everybody here and have us take a look at that as well through our park and rec department. And then this so-called study that got released, I think by some of the folks in the Building Association or one of the building associations, about the fact that building permit fees are triggering the high cost of housing and that we as city governments are greatly to blame for the high cost of housing because of the fees that we charge, the building permit fees that we charge. I think you're trying to address that in some form or fashion because that's been raised in our community, too, about, you know, are we overcharging on our building fees? Well, of course, our building, any fee has to have a relationship to the costs of providing the service. So are we doing anything about that?
Your Honor, a member of council, yes. We are, and we are working with a couple of additional cities who have similar kinds of housing economies to ours. Plymouth, Woodbury, Lakeville, just to name a couple. And we are also coordinating this response with the League of Minnesota Cities, Metro Cities, and we're going to have some discussion tomorrow at Municipal Legislative Commission. So there's a number of different parties that are coordinating response. It's important that that response be accurate and truthful. So we're working on that to make sure it will be both.
All right. Good. And then finally, on a great note, I think a young woman who was a senior at Edina High School, I got a note on this, Anushka Thorat. She has been selected to serve for a second year on the Minnesota Youth Council, and she will be representing Minnesota's third congressional district. The Minnesota Youth Council is a collaboration of youth and adults working together to empower and mobilize young people across the state to exercise their voices, opinions, and ideas and take action on issues affecting youth. So congratulations to Anushka Thorat for that second appointment to the Youth Council. And that's it for me. Manager Neil?
I don't have anything tonight.
I have one more thing.
Member Brindle?
And that is that Paul Thompson and Mindy Ailer are getting married on September 21st. So I want to wish them well.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I just want to follow up? It's the problem when you start on council comment or the council comment, and then you hear all of the wonderful things your fellow council members say.
They're wonderful.
You know, I just want to reflect on the one thing because it really struck me tonight, and I want to thank councilmember Staunton for saying it. Because for me personally, you know, I've been very disheartened by what's been happening in our city with this vandalism and this graffiti and basic blatant racism. And so it's, you know, sometimes I think we all, you know, we get disheartened, we get disappointed, we get disgusted. But when we internalize it, how's that helping? And that was the message that I heard tonight, that we have to speak out. We all have to. We have to let people know that this isn't okay, and we have to talk about that. And so, and we got a really good email from one of our citizens about that, and I think you articulated it really well. So that is something we can do. It's something we can all do and need to start doing it.
Thank you for those comments, those final comments. All right. I think we're through for the evening. We stand adjourned.